Thank you. Okay, welcome everybody to today's meeting of the Jones Library Board of Trustees. I'm gonna ask you to signify your presence vocally, Tammy.
Yes.
Thank you Farah.
Yes.
Alex.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
And Austin is present. I hope Bob will be joining us momentarily. My hope tonight is that we can look at, we can discuss them, some proposals for the, an amended memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding. And that if we have time, we can go back to the motion that Bob made and that we tabled. So before we do that, I'm gonna ask if there's any public comment. So there are two attendees. Thank you for coming. If you would like to make a public comment, if you would raise your virtual hand. Okay. No public comment. All right, the next is, next item is a discussion of the possibility of updating the memorandum of agreement with the town. Sharon and I have had a couple of meetings with Lynn and Paul. There are a couple of things that need to be done to the memorandum of understanding and one thing in particular that is a question of not need to be done, but whether it should be done. So it needs to be done, among other things, are updating the numbers in the memorandum of understanding. There are other possible fixes, including the date of the last payment. And it's the intention of the town to kind of clean up this stuff, the dates and the amounts. There is one, I think, what I'm gonna say substantive issue that we need to talk about and see how we feel about. So there have been conversations in the finance committee about what would happen to the town's ability to do the capital projects and capital improvements it needs to do during a two-year period when it has to take on these bands, these bond anticipation notes. The question is whether or not we, the trustees, would be willing to agree to the following language. The library and the town, and again, the language is not exact. So don't, it's like the words aren't all perfect. The town, library and the town will do everything possible to expedite providing funds to the town. And this is, the language is not exact, to avoid or minimize the amount and timing of the short-term loans bands during construction. This will not increase the new library share of the project. So what it, what it contemplates is the possibility of accelerated payments. The source of those payments might be, we get a lot of, lot more contributions and they come in earlier than is currently contemplated. Another possible source would be that we would withdraw funds from our endowment and transfer those funds to the town. So as to accelerate the payments, which would help the town deal with the short-term borrowing costs. And I understand though, the amount is not obviously fixed. I understand that the estimate is about $760,000. The precise dates when those, the time when that would need to be, that payment would need to be accelerated will depend exactly on when the bond, these bands are issued. So the thought is that we could be helpful to the town in dealing with the issue of managing the timing and the drawdown, so to speak, that are going to be required through these bands. No increase in the library share is currently contemplated. So I think that's the key thing that we need to discuss. And Bob, you came on just a little bit late. What I said, I thought we would do is talk about the, the memorandum of understanding in, in principle, we're not gonna try to like reach an agreement today and finalize anything. And then talk about your motion that we tabled last time. Okay, so what are your thoughts directing in particular your attention to this question about the possibility of expediting payments to the town? Alex?
Yeah, I'm, I absolutely, I mean, I, I totally on board with that idea, having been on the joint capital planning committee for the last eight or nine years, I'm certainly understanding of how tight that budget is every year. And if there's a way for us to take care of that without, yeah, I mean, to me, it seems like a really nice compromise and something that, yeah, absolutely, I'm on board with.
Except I want to call attention to the without in your sentence, because it's not clear that it would be without. In other words, we, we might-
Sorry, I'm sorry, I shouldn't finish my sentence and said without us taking on, we're not taking on the cost of the, yes, without us taking on additional costs that are right now associated with the town. So how we choose to accelerate that, whether it comes from the endowment or what that looks like. I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with, and I won't be around. So I'm comfortable with future trustees making that decision. But I, I agree with the idea of us being open to the possibility of trying to accelerate payments in any way that we can. And if it makes sense for us to investigate whether it's at that time, I mean, that's the thing too, I don't, I mean, at the time, if we have a better sense of what the commitments are, right? And it's a matter of waiting for year X payment. I feel like we'll have a lot more information to be able to decide what makes the most sense and how we can work with the town to accelerate those payments. So it's a concept that I'm certainly comfortable with.
So the thing I just want to keep in everybody's mind as we think about this is that one possibility is that we would have to draw down the endowment. So that might have some impact on operating expenses. It would depend upon the value of the endowment and it would depend on what we decided as a draw rate. So that's when you said without, I just wanted to make sure that everybody has in mind that there's a possibility that we would need to transfer some funds that were not coming in through the capital campaign or through grant or something else earlier than we would have contemplated doing it prior to entering into this agreement. Okay, other thoughts? Bob?
I guess the only way to really talk about this is to go through the, the current plan for how these things operate. So I'm just going to, to reiterate what has been discussed and what I believe the town council in particular, its finance committee have been focused on. We have to date given $500,000. What I projected, and it was a projection, was that sometime during fiscal 24, which is the year we're in right now, we would come up with $2 million more. That sometime during fiscal 25, which is next year, beginning July, we would come up with $4 million more. And then in the following year, we would come up with $5 million more. So what we're talking about is coming up with $11 million over the next, this year plus two more years after that. Based upon that plan, what they created was a payment system in which they would borrow a construction loan, which is called a ban of $14 million. And that would be done somewhere around the turn of the year. Basically, they were saying in February of 2025. It is the interest on that loan, that $14 million, which then becomes $566,000 in interest payments. In order to reduce those interest payments, what you would be doing is not paying the interest, but rather reducing the amount of that ban. In order to make that significant, you would really have to do a million dollars wet less in, in a ban at at 4% would mean $40,000 less withdrawn for a gonna make this complicated, $40,000 over a year. And multiply that by 14 and you get to this $566,000. In order for us to have a significant impact on that, we could pay interest on that for a year. And that would be $566,000. But that would be a totally different structure than anything that we have been talking about up till now. And although they might accept that as a credit towards our payments, it would not in fact change the economics of it in terms of covering the, the $46 million that we're obligated to. So I'm, I'm just not seeing how this works.
So this is what Sharon and I were told. We were told that the amount that the town was thinking about was 750 or 760,000, because it's five something and then there's another figure. And what-
There are three different bands and so-
Let me just, I'm sorry, let me just-
Sorry, go ahead.
If, if I could-
Yes.
That the total figure was about 760.
Correct.
Correct. So that what the town is asking of us is the possibility of accelerating the payments to cover that $760,000 at the time that the town needs to borrow it and to pay the interest on it. So it would not increase the library share. It would just say, we're gonna pay you a little bit more than was originally contemplated sooner.
Are you ready for me to, to talk?
Well, not quite, because I want to ask Farah to get in, if that's okay.
Sure.
Farah?
Actually, Bob, if you want Bob to finish, he can, because mine is a little more, less complicated and more about the language of number nine.
Okay. Bob?
So Bob, go ahead.
Okay, the 764 is simply the interest on these bands.
Correct.
Okay, and it involves a 12-month ban with interest of 566, a six-month ban of 136,000, and then a, a year and a, a month and a half for 62,000 more, which totals to the 764.
That's right.
If we were to make payments. I don't, I don't know how to respond to the question, because so far what we are doing is projecting $11 million coming in. If we want to project that it'll be $11.7 million, we could do that. But it, I'm not sure what we would be saying in this MOA amendment.
What we're saying is we are willing to consider accelerating payments over what was previously contemplated. And the acceleration of those payments might require us to go into the endowment up to an amount of $764,000. That's what we're contemplating. That's what we're being asked. That's what this language is asking us. Again, we're not agreeing to anything today. The question is, are we willing to accelerate payments to help the town deal with the two years that the finance committee thinks there are gonna be some problems in terms of its capital its capital outlays? Farah?
Just, just the language. Should the last line of number nine read, this will not increase the town's portion of the new library share of the project? Because that's what we keep wanting to reassure the town, right? That's what everybody is concerned, no? Alex is-
No, the language needs to say that if we accelerate the payments, we are not gonna contribute more than we have previously agreed to. And so there is something called new library share.
Okay, okay, all right.
So this is just to be clear that we're not saying we're gonna, we're gonna add more to the library share.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Yep.
Alex?
So the last thing that you said in response to Bob's question was different than what I was hearing you say initially or, or what I read in the language. So I guess I want to make sure that I understand. So you, and if I mistyped, let me know. So you were saying that the possibility of accelerating the payments to cover up to the 760,000 in interest, which is a very different thing. I mean, I don't know what they're asking. So is it an up to 760? I mean, I guess the way I was reading that language was, for example, on the fundraising campaign, a lot of what has happened is they've gone out and they've asked people to make payments over a five-year period.
Right.
And we could certainly go back to people and say, if you're able, we would actually appreciate, give us a lump sum instead of that five-year period, right? Which will either get us closer to Bob's projections or will exceed Bob's projections in terms of timing. And so in theory, the amount that we would have to borrow under the bands would be less, which would decrease the interest that they would need to pay. So and, and if we get to a point where it's time for the town to take out a short-term loan, to take out the ban, then we could sit down as trustees and say, okay, what's the shortfall for this period of time, right? We have this funding coming in. So let's say the town needs a million dollars, right?
Yep.
That we know we still have coming in. So then we have the conversation of, do we want to take out half that, all of that or whatever? Like, that's what I'm hearing, which is different from really, the 760,000 just is the projected interest. It is what it is. It's what the town's trying to save. And but, but how we accelerate the payments and how we, that's not necessarily us giving them the interest. It's how we decide to front, if you will, the anticipated fundraising that's coming in. So that's a little bit different than what I heard you just explain to Bob, so.
The language says the library and the town will do everything possible to expedite providing funds. So that's what we are talking about doing. And in talking with the town manager about, well, what does it mean? What are you worried about? One of the things that they're worried about is they're worried about, as Bob pointed out, these three interest payments. So one of the things I said, well, what is this meet, you know, like, what are you talking about? And one of the things that was said was advancing $760,000. Now, that doesn't have anything to do with, somebody gives us 5 million, so we could give the town 5 million and also provide the, this, this other kind of thing. But that depends on what the town needs at the time that these bands are issued. That's why this is not contemplated, like they're gonna name an amount, because we don't know what they'll need at the time. So what we're being asked to do is to agree, that's what you said, Alex, I thought that you liked, that we're gonna work with the town to expedite payments to help offset the cost to the town of these bands. Tammy?
You said we're not gonna decide this tonight. So what's the, the timeline here? And is the town council going to vote on the bond authorization on Monday? And if so, do they need this clarified? I mean, what's our timeline?
So what I think we need to do is we need to agree that we think this is possible. We need to come to what I would call an agreement in principle. And then I'll communicate that to Paul. We've reached an agreement in principle that the language contemplated here is with, you know, tweaks here and there. Acceptable.
I mean, I, I'd just like to comment that in all the, the things I've listened to from the finance committee and town councillors, that they're very concerned about the interest that is increasing the town's share. So I, I think whatever we can do to mitigate that and in good faith to let them know that we're concerned about that and looking at strategies to decrease or eliminate their additional costs is, is good. I mean, obviously, if we took, took out from the endowment, it would be put back in when the payments came later, correct? From the MBLC or whomever.
We hope, and we of course, hope that it would come into the fundraising. But I just want to be clear, as I understand it, you all have listened to the very same things I have. The town's costs are not increasing. In fact, given the success of the capital campaign so far, their interest costs might even be a little less than they thought. So it's not, we are not covering increased costs to the town, because as I understand it, there are not going to be increased costs to the town. The issue has to do with the timing of these payments associated with these bond anticipation notes. Not that we are helping the town deal with increased costs, because what I heard was they're not gonna be increased costs to the town. Bob?
The language of nine says do everything possible to expedite providing funds to the town to avoid or minimize the amount and timing of the short-term loans bands during construction. Essentially, advancing the interest is not what's contemplated here. It is about minimizing the amount of the bands.
But if you advance the interest, you can help minimize the amount of the bands.
Not true.
Okay.
The, the ban is going towards construction costs. And all of those dollars will be spent on the project. The interest is separate from that and it is, it is a charge not to the project, but rather to the town. It, it just doesn't work that way.
So let me just ask you a question, just so we'll be clear about this. The, the town needs to issue a $14 million ban.
Yes.
We give the town $700,000.
Yes.
Town issues a $13 million, $300,000 ban.
Yes. And its savings in terms of interest is $40,000.
Correct, but we've reduced the amount of the band by contributing the amount as if it was the amount of the interest.
Okay, but the problem that they're trying to address is how much of the town's capital budget is going towards interest? And if you've reduced it by 35 or $40,000 by contributing this amount of money towards how much they need to borrow, it's not having a appreciable effect on them. Because instead of paying $562,000 one year later, they're paying $525,000. It's, you know, it's, it's still essentially the same thing for them.
Well, then I'm not sure why they're proposing.
I don't, I don't understand that either. What they're basically-
Tell what I've understood, what I've understood is that if we were to think about the interest payment, that it would be helpful to the town. And that would help reduce the amount of the bands. And that's what they want to do.
We can pay all of it next week, in which case the bands will disappear.
Lee?
I mean, right, my understanding is it's a kind of a question of timing.
Correct.
The town has, is anticipating a cash flow problem in a particular time period.
Correct.
And during that time period, it would be helpful to the town if the library for that period of time could contribute its share of contributions to this project.
Correct.
As it were earlier than we had anticipated, but you don't even, but, okay. So it doesn't alter the overall financial picture. It just alters the timing. And then we are being asked to consider how, should we agree to do this, which I definitely think we should, how we, the library and the library trustees would cover those payments.
Correct.
As usual, I say, my goodness, I'm amazed. All right. So that, I mean, that's the question. Then, you know, as the, yeah, Kent and I will soldier on and, and we're grateful to Bob who issued a challenge, as I heard it the other day, to encourage everybody to give, you know, pay up your pledges early.
Asked, yeah.
Which, which as far as I could see, looking in today is actually happening. So thank you, Bob.
Good.
Yeah.
Bob, is your hand still up or is this a new question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still trying to work through all of the pieces of this as I understand them.
Great, sure.
I don't know whether the interest paid on the bands is an eligible expense of the project from the perspective of MBLC. MBLC requires that all monies that are received go into a separate account at the, at the town, which is then used to cover expenses of the project. To the extent that we are putting aside a separate sum of money going to the town to essentially cover the interest costs. I don't know whether that is, is an okay thing from the perspective of the MBLC. And I don't know whether what we are talking about in, if it is being credited towards our contribution to the project, whether that fits the requirements. If we don't do it in that form, are we essentially instead making a loan to the town so that it has money to pay its interest during this period when there is a particular shortfall in the capital campaign? In which case, then it is outside of and separate from the, the payments that we are making towards the project, which would then mean that it would then be reimbursed by the town when they are not in this kind of tight space. But I, I'm just trying to understand that. Tight space, but I I'm just trying to understand that. And it is contemplated under nine.
I think you got it exactly right, except the idea of the town like paying us back. So it's a matter of paying it earlier rather than paying it later. And what you've said is, I think, not exactly precise in the sense of it's a loan, it's an advance. So. I think what you said is exactly what we're talking about. Pay it faster to them. Alex?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just I. Bob, I you and I are not so far apart as often is the case in terms of like, I'm I'm with you on my like, I was there until the seven hundred and fifty thousand came out and then and that's when I. Got sideways, as I think you did as well. But I mean, for me, the bottom line is. I very much believe that and and agree with that we should do everything in our power to accelerate the money going to the town. And as long as the language which it currently states doesn't increase our share. How whatever town wants to do with that money is up to town, right? If they want to. Put it through their interest payments, right? Then we need to get into the nitty gritty as Bob saying about accounts and where it goes and. We can have those conversations, but. As long as what we're committing to, and that's what I read in the language, that we will accelerate the payments. To the best of our ability, and we are not taking on any additional cost than what we've agreed, which is the library share. Then. The actual. You know, details of how they do it and what the town has in mind, and perhaps. They have a rough idea right now, and we won't know until we get to that point what it's gonna look like. It is fine. I mean, I'm. I don't think Bob's wrong in terms of like, does a hundred percent make sense to me with the seven, but 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 in in. In principle, I'm I'm fine, which is what you're looking for today.
That's that's what that's what we're trying to do. And the principle, I'm just gonna say back to you what I've understood you to say. Principle has two elements to it, acceleration of payments, no additional. You know, library, the library share remains exactly what it was. What we are saying is we will work with the town to accelerate payments. That's what I want to know, do you think it's reasonable to say back that we agree in principle with? And the town is agnostic as to where those. Where that acceleration comes from. If Lee and Kent, you know, bring it in more pledges turn into cash faster than. That's fine. The thing that I want. Just to repeat is we might be in a position. Where in order to do this, we're gonna have to go into the endowment.
Right.
And then as the capital campaign money comes in. So everybody should be aware of that. Bob?
As. We discussed at our last meeting. Our. Rate at which we will be making. Payments to the town. Is essentially a set of projections.
Correct.
And those projections. Could be. Plus or minus, and who knows at this point exactly what they will be. And would it be nice if instead of at that point, instead of providing six point five million, we have provided seven point five million? I would love to see that happen. And if the town were to choose at that point. Or. Some portion of that. Be used by them to cover the five hundred and sixty two thousand dollars, which is the interest cost for the band. You know, that's their. Choice as as to how they would make use of that. If what you are asking is whether. We are willing to. Sequester. One portion of our payments during this period. For whatever special purposes the town wants to make of it. We could do that, but that would be the town's choice of how they want to make use of our. Payments, which we are making in any case through the capital campaign.
Library in the town will do everything possible to expedite expedite providing funds to the town. The word sequestration was not used in any conversation that we've had. So I don't know that it's contemplated that it would be funds sequestered. I think what you said. Is right, the town can. We're gonna accelerate payments to the town. And. The idea is that's gonna help offset. The short term issues that the town is gonna. May encounter. How the town does its counting and where it counts it and how it counts it. I don't think it's for us to figure out. So again, I'm gonna say just so that. Are we? Saying that we agree in principle. To. We will accelerate the payments, working with the town to figure out when they have to be accelerated. And. That this will not increase the new library share of the project. I don't hear any objection to it.
I would only make one tweak awesome to your language. You you said that we will accelerate the payments and the the language says we'll do everything possible. Everything possible to expedite. To me, that's that's important language.
No, I understand it's important language, Alex. We are not now. Wordsmithing this. What I'd like to get. So I can communicate it is clarity about whether people are willing to. Go the next step to try to actually, this is the this is the language. And you're certainly right to say we'll do everything possible. So if anybody has an objection to it, if they would register it, that would be great. So that I can then. Let the town manager know that we have an agreement in principle. Subject to. Actually looking at the precise language. Okay. About?
Yeah. And the other question related to paragraph seven. And what it provides is that. We would pay simultaneous with the final payment made to the town by the MBLC. For the total project cost, which is projected to occur on or before June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. It is my understanding that it would occur. In all probability on or after July first of twenty twenty seven.
Right, so there're gonna have to be some tweaks to some of this language.
It is. A question. That I thought.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question, and Alex, you can, you know, you can say whatever you want to say. The key thing I want you to understand is we are not. Negotiate, this is not, we're not signing off on this. There'll have to be some changes to some of these, this language. Which we should all surface, like we want to be aware of what those changes should be. But we're not signing off on this. We're saying we agree in principle to do what is contemplated. That twenty twenty seven date is the date that we wanted. And getting it right, that it's on or before. On or after. Is an important thing to clarify. Okay, other, Alex? Are you?
Yeah, I I was just. Oh, sorry, Bob, did you have something more? I was just gonna say, Bob, that I actually redlined some things as well. I think probably all of us have seen. So I'm viewing today's meeting as what Austin asked is in principle. What do we and and I'm not getting in, as you know, I like to hear the weeds of the language, because I've been told that'll happen at a later date, so. You're not alone in seeing some things.
Bob?
The 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 last point is just a technical one, and that is that these documents require. Original signatures at some point, so once. Once there is agreement on what it is we're talking about. We will have to, you know, come to the library and sign this.
Yep, Lee?
Well. I assume we're not operating. In a vacuum. And so there's a reason why we're having this meeting now. In relationship to. Activities going forward, so have. I would like to do whatever I can do. To ensure that this is helpful to the project going forward.
What I understand is that what will be helpful is communicating to the town manager that the. Board of Trustees of the library. Discuss this and agreed in principle. To accelerating payments. And not increasing the library's share. And as I said, not hearing any objection to it. I think if it's okay with you, I will communicate that back to the town manager. That's that's what we agreed that. I would do after this meeting. The next, so. Are we done with that? And if you have. Editorial suggestions. You might communicate them to the town manager and and to me, and we can again, look at them together. Before we sign anything on the on the dotted line. Okay, the next thing is, Bob, I want to return to your. Motion. That was tabled. And we we got some information from the library director. Which I hope was helpful in clarifying what it is that we were talking about. The the last time. So. Can we return to your motion, Bob?
Sure.
Okay, so. Let's let's move to take it off the table. I think that's procedurally correct. I move that we take it off the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are we all in agreement to take it off the table?
Yes.
Okay, motions back on the motions back on the floor. So I have a question. I wonder if. When I'm about to read. May do what it is that we're trying to do. So I'm just gonna read it and then I'm gonna propose, if it's if if it captures what we're trying to do, then I'm gonna propose it as an amendment. Is that okay? Upon approval by the town council of the Jones Library renovation expansion project. The library shall begin to transfer the assets contained in the following funds. And then name the funds. Stone, Potash, Fotis. B E and R Van Steenberg and. Runberg to the town for its use on the project. So we've just actually named the funds. Okay, I haven't heard any objection to it, so I'm gonna propose, Obama?
Well, the. The funds which were. Previously. Potash. Were bequests and they have disappeared as separate things. What remains is simply a contribution to the endowment. And so I believe those are simply. Payments from the endowment equal in value to what had previously been.
So the language, I I think you're exactly right. That's why the language refers to. The assets. Now, maybe you don't want to say contained in or associated with the gifts.
That's correct.
But it references the assets and the and the and the gifts. So again, Bob, do you not, you don't like the language of contained in?
It it's not contained in anymore. What does it mean?
Well, what do you want to say? Associated with?
Derived from?
Fine with me. So. Again, I'm gonna propose this as an amendment. Upon approval by the town council of the Jones Library renovation expansion project, the library shall begin to transfer. The assets derived from the following funds. Stone, Potash, Fotis, B E and R Van Steenberg and Runberg. To the town for its use on the project. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
It is the bequests which no longer exist. The others still remain as existing funds. So it is. You know, the list and the funds or assets derived from, and there's just those two.
That's what the language now says, Bob, assets derived from. So are we ready to vote on the amendment? And then we go back to it. So the amendment is just to substitute that that language naming the funds, right? Because Bob's original. Motion did not contain any reverence to the funds, Alex?
I I'm not sure procedurally where. Where to say what I want to say, so I. What I understood was Bob had two concerns. One is. Reiterating our commitment to pay, you know, as soon as possible, as soon as it's approved and be dealing with these funds, and I. Think that this does that second piece. And my concern with the first piece, as I stated in the last meeting, is that in. We are we're literally in the process of redoing an MO, an MOA with the town. And so to write an MOA in the town with the town that says we're gonna pay you right away, and then to have a motion that says we're gonna pay you right away. I like, to me, I don't, more is not better, in my opinion, when you're dealing with legal contracts, so. Again, I'm not sure where this goes procedurally, but I. I would. It would be my suggestion that instead of Bob's original language, we just take this language, and if Bob has any concern. In the MOA, then we address that when we're redlining that bit of the MOA. I I personally think that's cleaner, so I, again, I don't know procedurally where that goes, but.
You 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 don't want to have a separate motion, or are you saying that once the motion is voted, we will add it to the MOA?
No, I'm saying that it was a two part motion, so the first, so Bob. The original motion is basically saying like, we're gonna pay as soon as possible, and then your amendment clarifies that bit where we have these certain funds that. Bob felt needed clarity, and to me. We don't need Bob's. Original motion anymore because any. Any, any, any part he thought was unclear, we should we should redline in the MOA to make clear that we're gonna pay as soon as possible. But the second bit, which was his other concern, I I think is valid, and I would. I would substitute Bob's motion for this motion, I guess, rather than amending, I would I would substitute this.
So this is Bob's motion. Except it specifies where the assets are going to be derived from. And Bob's concern, which I've come to understand and to share, is that. These funds exist in a money market here, a money market there. It simply clarifies the intention, which the MOA also notes, that we're gonna turn over the funds. So. It it doesn't, to me, it doesn't create a source of confusion. It says. We're agreeing. That when we talking about transferring funds. We're talking about these five or six funds as well as. The stuff that's coming through the capital campaign and grants and other kinds of things. That's what I took Bob's purpose to be, and as I said, looking at it afterwards and looking at the funds, I thought. Yeah, let's let's say we're gonna. Transfer the assets derived from these funds. So on the question of amending the motion, which is simply to name the funds, that's the really the only substantive change of this amendment. Are we ready to vote on the naming of the funds? Okay, Alex?
I I don't know how to vote because I agree with this amendment, but I don't agree with the original amendment, so. This is my consternation. I don't want to vote yes for this and then no for. The full motion, because I.
Right.
Sorry. Are you? Are you substituting this language, Austin? Are you adding it to Bob's original?
So I'm sorry.
I'm sorry if I'm unclear.
No, 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 it's not your problem. Bob's motion. Did not name the funds. Did not name the funds.
Are we using Bob's original language and adding this to it?
Correct.
Or are you subs? Okay.
It's it's an amendment to Bob's motion just to name the funds, right? It it's not a, we're starting again. The language about transferring is, that's all still there.
Right, which is what I'm saying, I I. I don't think we should take Bob's original language because that creates ambiguity, I am a hundred percent. In favor of a motion that just adds naming the funds. Because I share.
Adds to what?
Just make a motion instead. That says trustees move that upon approval by town council, the Jones. Library renovation expansion project, the library shall begin to transfer assets derived from the following funds, that's the motion. We don't need to add it to Bob's previous motion.
I'm sorry, Alex, this is totally. Uh that what you've just said is what we've done. So look at Bob's original motion and then look at what my amendment does, it just names the funds.
Okay.
Frame of. Bob's original.
I think we're talking at cross purposes, but what I was trying to say, this is the motion in its entirety, once we approve this.
So the first, as I understand it, procedure, the first thing we need to do is to amend Bob's motion by adding that language about naming the funds.
That's all we're adding is naming the funds, other, okay, that's fine.
Can somebody just read the motion as it will be amended?
Yes. Approval by the town council of the Jones Library renovation expansion project. The library shall begin to transfer the assets, that is the language Bob from your original motion.
Yes.
Derived from the following funds, Stone, Potash, Fotis, B E and R Van Steenberg and. Rudd Ruddberg to the town for its use on the project. The the only change in the motion.
Nope, I'm good, I'm good, thank you, Bob, for having him reread it, I I'm great, that's great, ready to vote.
Alex, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bob?
Happy to have the amendment added.
Thank you, Tammy?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has been amended, now we vote on the whole thing. Any discussion of the whole thing? Alex, how do you vote?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Look, thank you, Lee?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Austin votes yes, and I wanna just say um. Uh again, thank you to Bob, seeing once we, once they saw the funds as they were specified and where they were. I understood what the motion was doing and I think it's very helpful to to do it and. Sharon, could you remind us roughly what's in those funds now, what is the total amount?
A little over two hundred and ninety seven thousand.
So uh again, I think it was everybody's intention to turn those funds over as soon as the vote happens. We now know what the amount is and where the funds are derived from. Okay.
There will be technicalities as, you know, we withdraw it from Vanguard and then move it and so on, but you know, it's as soon as possible.
Right, that's what we've agreed to. Okay, anything else? So I will now inform, I'll inform the town manager that we've agreed in principle as we have. And um. I expect that then there'll be more communication about how to move forward with the memorandum of uh agreement. Uh whether that will come before Monday's vote or after Monday's vote, I don't know. But I'll let you, I'll let you know, meantime, keep the Monday. Uh time slot. Uh in case, in case we, in case we need it. Laura, did you have something? Sarah?
Oh, I was just, um, was it four P M? I I, yeah, okay.
Lee?
Keep the faith.
All right, thank you, good to see everybody, have a good weekend.
Thank you.